Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting, I don't know.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
I'd like to call this meeting of April 16th order, and Commissioner O'Rourke is going to lead us in the pledge tonight.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk read the roll, please?
Commissioner Kramer, present. Commissioner O'Rourke?
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Present.
Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Present.
Commissioner Alguier?
I'm here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
All present.
Thank you very much. We now are ready to approve board minutes. Does anybody have a motion?
I make a move that we approve the agenda as, or, excuse me, approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
All seven sets?
Yes.
All those who support that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved seven sets of minutes. Thank you. This time, we have an agenda to approve. The administrator has suggested that we add a late addition on a senior services item, and we'll move that down to 4D under action item if we could. Any other additions or deletions? Could I have a motion?
I would move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those who support that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved, 7-0. Thank you. We now are down to our Mr. Lewis, interim administrator update. Welcome to your second day, or your seventh day, or whatever.
Whatever it is, okay. Instead of me doing it verbally, you have a handout with bullet points on about five items. That part of them were on your agenda on the last go-around. I just want you to quick update on the Lelandal Tower. I know the township chair, I mean, the chair attended a township meeting last Tuesday evening, and he can provide an overview when I'm done, if you'd like. I understand he got quite a few questions. Of course, the main issue is getting the zoning in place. As we saw last week in your, in the EDS form and report, the zoning has not taken place. We're hoping that that will be on the April 25th B&amp;Z agenda of the township to start that process of moving it forward. But we'll try to catch up with that. We are, along with the chair, are going to meet with some of the, let the township officials next week to start putting together our steps forward, how we're going to get from where we are now to where we're going to be. Also, I'm going to be reviewing the contract, but there's, I know that Matt did get in touch with them, but it's going to, they're open for an extension. However, there's going to probably be some cost increase because you entered into the contract two years ago, and you know there's some things that may increase and may not, but until we open it up. But there's no point in jumping through those couple of hoops yet until we get through the process, we know we've got the zoning in place. Also, when we get ready to do driveway, we will putting it, we will be putting out an RFP. I know that Lauren is starting to work on it, but I asked her to hold up. Let's make sure we know where we're going with the zoning. I don't, I don't know how many steps it takes to get through there, but usually it takes two separate meetings at plannings, takes two separate meetings at the township level. So if everything were to run, all the training, it could be June before we get the final approval, if it happens. So I want to make sure we, we have enough confidence before I send out an RFP, and then all of a sudden we have vendors giving us their quotes, and that's kind of a waste of their effort. I want to make sure this is where we're heading, or, because it's all in the township's hands now, it's not in ours. So more to come, and we'll give you an update on our meeting after next week. The sheriff, if you do, if you do, if the proposal is, that is in your, under your consent agenda is approved tonight, we'll start developing the implementation plan, meeting with all the staff that would, this would be involved with, such as human resources, as well as finance, and everybody that's around the table, to make sure we get a complete plan for your all's review, which hopefully we'll have on your May 14th meeting for your consideration. I would tell you that probably 85% of it's done, but we just want to make sure all eyes have seen it, and make sure all questions are good answered. The point broadband, first and not-so-good news, the July 30th deadline is not going to be met for numbers of reasons. There's been a reorganization in the company and some other things that I'm not totally familiar with, but it's just not going to happen. The better news is that they do have extra crews, have been brought in to start the work, to do more of the work. They are sharing us at this point that 90% of the unserved area will be completed by year-end, if not sooner, and those two areas that won't be is the more populated areas of Bingham Township and Elmwood Township. And there's a lot of other resources that they have there that can get internet and things, things like that. There's a revised agreement that our attorney, as well as our consultant, are working on. I've put a hard date, deadline, that I want everything resolved by May 30th, no, April 30th, or May, no, I said May 1st, didn't I? May 1st in my hands, so that I can be ready to bring it to you for your consideration on, May the 14th for consideration. I think I had them a little worried at one point, but they'll get it done. Okay, the multiple fixed asset disposal, we know, we talked about it, I'll, we'll have things ready for you at your May 14th executive board meeting. Again, which vehicles we are asking you to actually declare surplus once we start switching things around. Board compensation, which is last on your, on your agenda, or next to last. Only one of you gave any kind of feedback, you know, and part of the feedback, and that was Commissioner Al, I'm going to mispronounce the name.
Alguier. Alguier.
I can share you, within 120 days, I'll get it. Commissioner Alguier wasn't provided feedback, and she was okay with the suggested amount, but she also did some research to find out what the purchasing power today would be, if you were to take that, your current wage, and you were to do the CPI and all that kind of stuff up there, that commissioner's compensation would be today $9,500, and the chair's compensation would be $14,500. And also, the idea would be to also consider yearly increases equal to the, what employees see, employees receive, so at least you're not running another 15 or 20 years behind, but that's up for your consideration. Also, I know you did get a copy of the exit report from Deb. It's pretty comprehensive. If you got any thoughts or any concerns, please address them to me. I'll be meeting with Deb on, well, that last part of this, this week, to go through this and anything I missed. I know that Laurel has gone through it, so between the two of us, we may be able to figure it all out. I don't know. But as you can imagine, I'm going to be working on, on what is known as high, unless you see something in there that you don't think is high and ought to be low, or whatever, but high to me means, I think it was kind of important somewhere along the, at least in that one person's thought. So if you don't see that, then you need a little, let me know, so take it from there. When I say aye, it's a broad scope that everybody's on, it's like the Bible, when they say it's he, they really mean it's everybody, male and females, so anyway, so take it from there. Okay, that was that, quick passing to the point.
Any questions for the administrator?
I would like to add that my dentist suggested I do that.
I didn't want to talk about your relationship with your dentist.
I did have one item that, that I wanted to, and I talked to Kamal, who's on the dam authority, and you, the dam authority meets tomorrow, and I did see, I've learned not to respond and comment on Facebook, but I do follow Facebook, and quite a few concerns about lake level south end of Lake Lelandal. I'm not sure if they were just a couple people, but I think we got to ask that question tomorrow. They were quite critical of the county and, and the way we were doing the dam levels and not following the court order, so.
Part of that, I can explain more, part of it, I understand, didn't have as much snow as you're supposed to get, and you need a little bit more rain, so I'm sure we'll try to get it there as fast as we can get it, so.
Well, I'd just like to follow up, though. The meeting is at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning here in this room, and I would encourage anyone to come and listen to the whole, full authority members try to explain what, what we're doing and why. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the administrator? Okay. We now have public comment, and we're, this is the first public comment of the evening. We do have one at the end of the meeting. As, as we have talked about before, the first public comment is agenda-specific. You have three minutes, and we'd love to hear from you if you have something to say. Yes, Mrs. Wellman?
I'm Jill Wellman, Centerville Township, and I'm speaking on action item 5B. First, I'd like to make it clear that I think I'm older than any of you sitting in front of me, so if anyone should be offended by a comment at last week's meeting described as age discrimination, it would be me. During the discussion last week regarding an increase in salary for the county commissioners, one of the commissioners indicated how it was almost impossible for any person with a family and a full-time job to serve on the county board. It was pointed out that by the time you pay for childcare, or take time off of work, if that's even allowed, you are likely to lose money. So that pretty much leaves those of us who are retired and older to serve. I think that observation is obvious when you look at the compensation of the board. And another, other commissioner said that comment was age discrimination. As I see it, the opposite is true. It is you and all the other boards in the area that are practicing age discrimination. You schedule your meetings when only those who are self-employed, unemployed, or retired are reliably in, reliably attend. This is not only true for elected members, but the audience as well. Did you ever wonder why you look out on a group of gray-haired old people as your audience? Almost all the young people I'm here are making the report or giving a presentation. So will increasing the amount of money that the commissioner makes solve the problem? Maybe not, but it might make the difference if at least a person with a full-time job could afford to take a day off without pay and be compensated at least the amount of money that they will have earned. Why is this important? You are planning for the future. You are planning for your children and your grandchildren, and it would only seem fair that those who are most affected by those decisions have a role in making them.
Thank you, Mrs. Wellman. Any other public comment? Mr. Ashley?
Good evening. I'm Keith Ashley from Reillyland Township. I want to speak to the pay raise on 5B on the agenda. I want to state that I'm in favor of the pay raise for the board of commissioners. It's been pointed out at the last executive meeting that there's been no pay raises in the 25 years since the commissioner from District 7 was elected. Ironically, I agree with her, that in spite of her 27-plus years as a commissioner, this is not intended to be a career, so a raise should be modest. The proposed raise will help to make it possible for an employed, elected person to cover their costs of leaving their job, pay babysitters, put in the hours necessary to meet and talk with constituents, read and answer emails, study the reams of materials for the meetings, serve on one or two associated county committees, and participate in the executive and general meetings of this board. To the degree possible, the elected board of commissioners would reflect the demographics of the county. Attracting younger people should be a goal, not just for their ideas and enthusiasm, but to help increase public participation and awareness of the ongoing activities of the county. Attaining this goal can be helped by offering appropriate compensation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Scott Perry. I'm from District 2, and I would like to comment on the proposed pay increase as well. Although, I wish I could have been here to comment on the discussion last week. I watch from my office on YouTube. I find it a little more efficient to watch and fast-forward.
Wish we could do that ourselves.
The extra week to comment allowed time to look up what I consider to be pertinent facts regarding the purchasing power of the dollar, and as was laid out earlier, it's quite an increase since the last 25 years. According to, I'll say the math, because you just heard the same facts. But as objectively as possible, I feel like you could set the table for the next generation the same way that commissioners did in 1999 for yourselves. Coming from Commissioner O'Rourke's district, I support an increase in the base pay and per diem, never mind the extra curricular board positions or the pay of Lake County. We are talking specifically about the compensation or commitment to this county. The balance sheet has considered inflation and the tax base all along, and my mom often says, when you borrow something, you ought to return it in the condition you found it, or better. These seeds are borrowed from the people, and this is an opportunity to show my generation that bright individuals can lean into the work of the county without sacrificing their livelihood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any other public comment? Yes, Mrs. Dawkins? And then Renee? Ms. Wyler?
Kathy Dawkins, Lealing Township. I'm going to piggyback on Scott, Jill, and Keith, because they say it so much better than I did. So that's 5B on the action item that I was suggesting. And then consent item 4A. Several years ago, my husband had dementia, and, yeah, for approximately five years, and it was very hard for me. I was his caregiver, and I found out, I looked out for supporting the elderly. And luckily, I found the area agency, ACGM. They had a six-week class for caregivers of dementia people, and I learned a lot of things. I received support. Thank you for doing this. It is very important to people who have lost once, have had dementia, and it meant a lot to me, to be able to. I'm sorry, this just hits me, but it won't mean it. Anyway, thank you. Please do this again.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Kathy.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Wyler?
Good evening, Wyler. Rachel Lealing. I know you're going to go ahead and vote yourself raises, the 100% raise, because that's just what, what you guys do, but I would really like for you to tackle the hyper out there project first. It sounds like we're going to have a problem with meeting a deadline. Is that correct?
The current one, but the work will get done, yes.
All right. So what I don't understand is why you don't ask more questions about this. I think when Patricia Suda-Slitt came in before, she was talking about 300 subscribers, and if you divide that into $5 million, it was like $17,000 per subscriber. We need to know how many subscribers, because anyone, and you know how many subscribers we have, and how much more we have to dole out to them, and how much more are we going to have to dole out to the consultant, Chris? I would really like for you to go ahead and give yourself raises, but please address this issue and be a little bit more thoughtful and mindful of the tax fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyler. Any other public comment? Yes, Ms. Gethinger?
So, just to piggyback off a lot of folks on 5B, I know a lot of you commissioners are not giving yourself raises, but giving raises to the people coming next. And so for my commissioner, Mr. O'Rourke, who I have learned to really love, I'm so grateful that he's thinking of the people that come next, not just himself. And for Jamie Kramer, who will not be giving any of this money either, thank you for thinking about those that come next. And I really appreciate you considering making a decent wage for all the work that you do, and we appreciate very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Any other public comment? Any commissioner comment? We'll start with Mr. O'Rourke. Commissioner O'Rourke?
Well, this week is telecommunications week. That really doesn't mean too much, it's a big word, but what it comes down to is the 911 dispatcher. And when you're out on patrol, you're into a bad accident, you're into a domestic, you start screaming, raising your voice, lowering your voice, the dispatchers that work with you, they can tell by your voice if you're in trouble or not. So it's just a hats off to the dispatchers with us tonight is, Ms. Plamont, if you stand up, please, you're in charge of the, thank you very much. They do an awful job from, from handling a domestic. Imagine picking up the phone, and it's 3:00 in the morning, you get screaming on it, you're trying to settle the person down, or you got medical problems, or you go through CPR or clearing the airway. They do it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Alguier?
I guess I have to say, too, when my daughter had a massive heart attack last year, the 911 dispatch walked us all the way through it and got an ambulance there quickly.
Any other commissioner comment?
So, thank you.
Wanted to mention, Ms. Wyler, we do have those numbers of unserved, and I don't have it right here, but we'll send it out to you tomorrow morning. Well, better yet.
Yes, we are painfully aware of people who don't have service.
I will make sure all that gets in the report for next month, so it's more encompassing, if you don't mind. Is that satisfactory enough for you?
Yes, we just want to know who is not.
Okay. Well, if we get that, it's the folks in Elmwood Township, I'm sorry, I'll just say Elmwood Township and Bingham Township. Everybody else will be completed by the end of the year, if not before. Okay. Well, they have a lot of other access to, like, Sprint, they have a much better access to all kind of cable and telecommunication efforts right then and there, so.
Okay, we now are at our, our consent agenda. Like to read a statement about the consent agenda. "The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without any discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second." But before we vote on the consent agenda, I need to turn off my timer. In the past, the administrators kept time of the, and she was better at it than I am. That's the past.
I couldn't stand it. Couldn't stand it.
Do we need to do something with the added consented, you added something to 4D, is that acceptable? Just want to make sure.
That was an action. That was action. So, do I have a motion? Commissioner Ross?
I move that the Lelandal County Board of Commissioners accept the consent agenda.
Support.
All those who support that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0. That takes us down to the action item number one, and Mr. Lewis, you have a, you have a summary of that, for it?
Yeah. As you heard at our last meeting, the courts went out and got bids, got a proposal from, I'm getting to my one item here, wherever that was. But anyway, they went out and got pricing to install the same type of digital equipment that are, that's in the other courts upstairs. I know there was a discussion as to why we didn't go out, you know, for competitive bids, which is understandable with the price of $37,000. I'm going to be honest with you, even if we had gone out with competitive bids, we would more likely have awarded the contract, we would have recommended awarding this contract to the same vendor for the, one purpose is that it would not make a whole lot of sense to have two courtrooms operating on one operation system and then have the third one not in the same one. What should have done is that, we should have come to you first to request not to go out for bids and get this price for you, and it should have been in the memo, which we will start, you know, mentioning to folks to bring that forward that way. It makes logical sense. I would have done the same thing. But, you know, it's just the way it got presented to you, that we said, we were requesting you not to do the bids, but, you know, it's like, you know, trying to, I'm going to make a wild examination, trying to, you have two Chevrolets up there, and you're trying to put a 4D in it, but now you got, you're mixing parts and everything like that. So it's all just one level, it's all the same thing. Now, the next time, if they ever want to get to the point they want to do all three rooms, that's a whole different ballgame, you know? So it just made sense, and I would have done the same thing. I'm just going to be honest with you. So as, as the manager, you try to keep that as rare as you possibly can, but that's what I would have done, too, so.
The clerk's office is on page three of the memo prepared, has proposed the language from last week. We can have discussion of that, but can we first have a motion? Mr. Kramer?
I move that the Lelandal County Board of Commissioners waive bid policy and allow the purchase and installation in the necessary video and audio recording equipment upgrades needed in courtroom C, which serves both the probate and family courts in Lelandal County. The costs for the project would be included in equal parts from within the probate and family court budgets, with funds to come from the general fund.
Support.
Any discussion? Commissioner Rexroth?
So I voted no for this last week, last meeting, and that objection was not so much to the specifics of this, but to the continual waiving of bid requirements. And I'm still going to say, all right, this is one I actually probably see the benefit of, but we need, we need to have a different, longer-term policy than always do. I mean, you know, I can come in once and give you a little bid and be here forever and never have to be bid again. There are people that understand how to do business that way out there. I'm not saying it's, that's those people at all, that's not an accusation, but we just need to, we need to have a better outlook than, once a vendor, always a vendor, so.
Agreed. Just have a discussion before you say, you say the numbers, yeah. Any other commissioner comment? I think we're ready to vote. All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0. Thank you. We now have the issue with the soil conservation increase in fees. Mr. Christiansen is here. Hi, Steve. You want to start out? Well, let's get a motion on the floor then, and then we can have the discussion. Commissioner Ross?
I move that the Lelandal County Board of Commissioners approve the Lelandal Conservation District's revised soil erosion and sediment control fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lautner?
I will not be supporting the raise in fees. We just continually, continue to pound on, on those who are trying to build in our county in some instances. Not every instance. I understand where there are some, some delicate areas and some wetlands nearby, that sort of thing. There's no problem there. But when there is no wetlands, creek, river stream, or lake anywhere near a parcel, no steep grades, I just find this to be, without having an exception to that rule, I, I just can't support pouring one more fee on top of, of those trying to build in our county. We want, we try our best to get affordable housing in the county, and yet we just continue to raise the fees on them.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
I'm, I'm going to support this increase, and I did a little bit of research myself. Even just looking in the newspaper, someone can see that the vast majority of landowners are going for the small permits. It's the large ones that are moving a lot of earth and are really sensitive, big earth movements, that we need to raise those prices up considerably, so that we make sure that we're protecting our resources. We don't need more sedimentation going into any stream, any, any small wetland, so I think... So I think, I think the increase is substantial, but again, having worked with these fine individuals in the past, and looking at what projects are mostly increased, I feel like we're going about it in a smart way, so I'm going to support this.
Other Commissioner comments?
No, it sounded like an amendment, because that sounds like what I'm saying. You're saying, go, the big projects, definitely, this is, it makes sense, but on the projects that are smaller, there are not any wetlands, there are not any creeks, not any rivers, not any streams, and not any lakes nearby, and not any steep grades, why are we hammering them with a 200% increase? 100% increase? Why any increase at all? Especially if it does not take us... Sometimes I understand there are repeat visits. Those generally tend to be, yes, the more critical ones. But when you have a flat piece of ground, somebody's just trying to build a house on, and it's a small footprint that you're going after for yet another fee, and I have an issue with that.
Mr. Christiansen, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I think probably the most straightforward way to address the system that you have would be to offer salaries to all of the people involved and pay that out of general fund, and all the fees would go to the general fund. Done deal. You have the right people doing the right job, and they get the right pay, they get benefits, they could make a career out of it, and you solve the problem. What you have set up is a program where the fees have to cover the whole ball of wax. And as Buzz said quite eloquently on last Tuesday, it's not doing that. As for Melinda's comment, there are two townships that have, if you get a land use, you have to give soil erosion permit. One being Solomon, which one is great for Leland, and the other is Leland. And so granted, there are parcels that do get a soil erosion permit from that Thomas that fall into the category that Melinda eloquently explained, so.
That's where the complaints are coming from.
And with that comment, those are the two townships that do it that way, and, you know, we're here to try to fit the system. We need the increase to hire somebody to keep. You hire somebody and they leave for a better job, you hire somebody and they leave for a better job. I trained four people. It takes a ton to get to the point where they can do this job, and then they leave. We're just trying to do the job, and we're just trying to make the fee schedule fit the situation that we have in the county. And I am not opposed to you guys saying, hey, let's get salaries for these people to deserve it.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comment? Commissioner O'Rourke?
How long has it been since you guys have increased fees? It was on there?
Buzz was just interested in that.
What did it say? I'd have to pull it up.
Seventeen or something?
Yeah, it wasn't that. I was going to say four years, maybe seven years?
I guess.
Well, I will say that I concur, that you need to cover your costs, and you need to be able to hire and pay people, so I will support this. I do, I do recall that Buzz said that you've also done a lot of research and made comparisons to what other counties are charging, so I don't believe this was a rash decision that you were not careful about.
Commissioner Rush?
So our surrounding counties, how do they handle the fee structure? Do they have full-time employees?
That's a good question. Buzz and Alice really poured over that. Recently, in random traverse that's popped around, ended up at, um, true, I'm blanking. Council Department, where it ended up. At the end of hiring more people, and they cross-train, I forget how many people they hired. We do 500 to 600, they do 300, and they've got several, the equivalent of several dedicated people doing it. So, and I'm not sure, but I think the fees go in, the county pays, I'm not sure how that happens. I, no, it just doesn't have to be dangerous, I'm afraid. I only guess, but I think a lot of places have support for this program because they don't do 600 or 500. They don't do the number that can generate the money to pay the people, so the fees go into the county, the officers in the county, make sure that they do this job. The state has mandated that the county do this job, period. You have to do it, and it has to go somewhere. It's been with us for 30, 40 years.
How do we start the process of looking at that, maybe as an alternative to the current system? Is there a...
I would imagine if that's something that this body would like to have considered more information, as part of the budget process, we at least started to figure that out, and, you know, sometime in June or July, you can have those numbers back for you, you know, to see how that wraps up.
I just think it sounds like what we should be looking at. I mean, I'm going to hopefully...
As an option, so.
Yeah.
I know I'm going to support the motion. I did talk to Mr. Long, and I'm convinced that he has done the math, and he needs the fees to staff the program that we need to staff, so. Any other Commissioner comment? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, 6-1. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor. Thanks for giving time.
Are you going to stay here for Parks and Recreation, or are we letting you off the hook?
He sounded excited.
You could watch it on Zoom.
He wants to, he wants to pass forward to that.
Do you have anything, Mr. Lewis, on this?
Well, Parks Rec, you know, last, last week you did approve the grant, and as you are moving forward that grant, that grant was submitted on Wednesday afternoon. I think you all got a copy of the grant, so we'll take it from there. This is an actual proposal to actually buy the chips now, and hopefully we'll get reimbursed, but it's an issue that needs to be dealt with. As I shared with Ms. Ross before the meeting, this is not a capital improvement project, this is a maintenance project. So this is, I think, something that was highlighted in the risk analysis report we have. So speaking with Jerry last week, we are going to be moving forward with it to get, to buy the chips, install the chips, and hopefully we'll get reimbursed for half the cost. It has to be done regardless which way we go, so.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners waive bid policy and approve the purchase of engineered wood fiber mulch for the Miles-Kimmerly Park from Deering Tree Services, as quoted, in an amount not to exceed $5,732.50.
Support.
Any discussion? Commissioner Lutner?
So I'm going to thank Mr. Lewis for that, for taking care of this issue and the explanation. I think you're exactly right on track. The processes need to be followed, we need to make sure that we've got the communications of processes followed correctly in future, and get the projects in place before we try some...
If I may ask one for the motion or whatever, and I should have thought about this earlier. I'm hoping we get that bid price in, but if something happens, I need a couple more chips. Can you round that up to $6,000 in case I need to get a couple more truckloads or whatever it is? Just to be able to say...
It won't get you another truckload, but it'll get you...
Well, you know what I'm saying.
Linda, are you willing to amend the motion?
I didn't make the motion, but it makes sense.
I made the motion, and I'll amend it.
Say 6,000, that way it's an even number, but we'll stay below it during this, so just in case.
It can be used anywhere.
Yeah, well, there's other place, I'm sure, in the park that we can use it, so I'm not worried about three years.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0, and that was up to 6,000. Jen?
Yes, I changed it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, Jen.
Not a problem.
We're now down to the administration, the first one, the lower-level buildup project.
You heard about this last week, and I'm not as familiar about it, but basically, all this could have been completed, and it's all about these, some hardware for communication that was put in. And it would have been easy enough just to go ahead and separate it, but it's better that if we pay it and they can reimburse, but it all gets capitalized, so it doesn't show up on your books as an asset, as an expense. It'll end up being an asset to the building, so you own the complete asset. I think that was the intent that we were trying to accomplish here with that. So that's what you're doing, you own the asset, nobody else owns it, the county, and it's a part of the building. It doesn't go, something where it happened with the, with the leases downstairs, they don't get to take part of that asset with it. We own it, or the county owns it. So that's the better way to do it. It gets capitalized over a number of years by the auditors. So it's a better way of handling it, it doesn't show up as an expense in the end. I have spoken with the, with the district health advisor, we will be, after the finance director and I get time to breathe, you know, we'll try to get to where we're going to go through it, try to run some numbers, get things done, and we'll have a meeting with him and see what changes need to be made, or if they should be made, and we'll be bringing back a report to you, hopefully by the end of the month. So we're going to be at it, especially the allocation of the space and all those fancy numbers. Gives me an excuse to make a spreadsheet. Yes.
Kathy, do you have anything to add before we...
No, that's right on track, let's go ahead, I'll read you the one.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the change order and direct interim finance director to provide the BOC with a budget amendment for Fund Number 470 to increase the budgeted revenue contribution by local unit in the amount of $4,387.57. Fund balance forward, whoops, fund balance forward in the amount of $4,387.57, each covering 50%, and increase the project expense in the amount of $8,775.13, and authorize Leland County to reimburse the Benzy-Leland Department Health, District Health Department.
Support. Any discussion? Commissioner Rixro?
So I voted no again on this last time, and, you know, it probably is the right thing to pay, but it goes back again to procedure. That change order is supposed to be presented for us for approval prior to doing it. It's done, I don't know what you do now, but it's again another, to me, it's a thing we got to clean up while we do business around here, so.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
I do recall it coming up that while the workers were there, this was discovered, and it was, it made sense to do it while they were here instead of calling them back later. So it was just one of those wonderful things you find when you're building, that something is... Anyway, I will support this.
Commissioner Lutner?
Yeah, that actually was not the case. We had been told by the Health Department that they had all that covered, and they didn't need to use any of our system here. So this was their issue, they changed it midterm. And I will point out that this is a change order, and this is huge. Yes, was it an $8,000 change order? Yes, it was, but our administrator had, did not have the authority to sign a change order, and it easily could have been remedied in proper fashion. She thought it was within her purview, I believe she said, and it just simply was not. That's, that's an issue when we're not following our rules, our policies, and our procedures.
I think our administrator has heard concerns about process, and I, I think, I think we'll see a change.
I just have to say, that's not the way I recall it at all, but anyway.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Bottom line, the work's done. You got to pay the bill. We're capitalizing it.
So all those in support of the motion, we have a motion on the floor.
You do, in a second.
All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0. Thank you. We now have another issue downstairs.
Last week, you approved that we've got to do some extra cleaning, this is part of the change we're going to do. You approved, recommended approving that, that we would do $1,500 a month for the next couple of months. I'm going, you know, we said month to month, but I'm going to go for the next couple, and if we haven't got it resolved, we'll figure out something to do differently. I'm hoping to have it done sooner than, than your meeting in May, so we'll take it. But we're also backlog and a little bit here, because it is open and it is being used, so we'll watch it, and we'll get back with you on it. It's got to get cleaned, and it may be something that we tell them they got to do themselves as, when we get done with all this, so we'll take it from there, but we'll be getting on it pretty fast, so.
Commissioner Lutner?
Well, the issue just boils down to not the cleaning so much as the cost allocation that we got to clarify. It was very clear to the Health Department that they would be covering their share of cost allocation. It's written in the contract that it does include cleaning, so that just needs to be clarified, it needs to be amended, we need to amend it, but we need to get it straightened out.
And I'm sorry I haven't got to that one yet, it's on my...
What have you been doing?
I think it's listed high somewhere. I'm sorry, I just, I decided to watch the golf on Sunday, I'm sorry.
You've been here two days already.
Did I have a motion? Commissioner Rush?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the addition of cleaning services provided by Solutions For You to maintain the Benzy-Leland District Environmental Health Department space at the quoted rate of $1,500 on a month-to-month basis until there is further clarification, with funds to come from 631.000000801002.
Support.
Discussion. All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0. We now have our...
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, can I let the head going, let 70 go ahead of you? It shouldn't take but a minute, I appreciate, so she doesn't have to spend the extra time here.
Thank you.
It's okay with the board.
Absolutely.
Basically, this is a one-time, oh, not one-time, but we have an agreement here of a grant that we have received for $1,400, and it takes care of some services. We thought while we were approving all these contracts, and she can go ahead and do her work, $1,400, I could have, I would have already signed it, but I can't, so we're hoping that these services are already providing, and we got the money, it's sitting in our accounts, we just want to move it over to the right...
Do you want to be doing this?
Absolutely. We have an agreement with MAP, which is Medicare and Medicaid Assistance Program. Bruce Sarns, who holds an office here once or twice a month, submit the applications for LIS and MSP, which is the Medicare Savings Program, to our seniors. So this is successful submissions of those applications, and it's a contribution from MAP.
Thank you. Commissioner Rixro?
I move to recommend that the county board of commissioners, actually, this is, yeah, recommend that the board of commissioners accept the contribution from MMAP Inc., totaling $1,400, and placed into Leland County Senior Services Account Number 281.0000000-677.000.
Support.
All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, 7-0. Thank you. Now, Mr. Lewis, you want to introduce our guest?
Next, we have Mr. Bob Neelyson, Bob Neelyson, who's the engineer for the Airport Authority. Jennifer Moore, who's with the Office of Aeronautics with the State of Michigan, and then we have Carrie Zeitz, the attorney for the board. In your revised packet of their PowerPoint for tonight, you do have the flow chart of what would happen if this process gets put into place, how the application would flow. We appreciate it. Of course, this flow chart will be, until you get the first point in, this is how we hope it'll work. You'll probably have to have some changes to it down the road. The first part of that flow chart, of course, was if, what happens at the, I'm glad you asked the question, Ms. Lutner, because the first one where it says it comes in, not right, no. Well, that happens at the local level. Everything else after that is what happens when it has to go to the Airport Authority.
Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have the PowerPoint for the audience? No, okay.
I think Leanne's gone.
It will be available online for those that would like to see it. Thank you, Ms. Neelyson.
Very good, yes. Just again, thank you for letting us follow up again, turning Zeitz, and then Jen Ward, she is from the Office of Aeronautics with the state, and she is in charge of the airport and so on. So that is her specialty, so she's here as an additional resource to you for questions tonight. I'll just briefly go over what we talked about last week, and then get on to some of that process stuff that I wanted to ask you to follow. So again, existing state regulations... So, again, existing state regulations currently require both height and land use zoning, so we're here to talk about ways to implement local variance opportunities by implementing best ordinance. Again, height limitations, again, it depends on how far you are from the airport. Again, existing federal law that covers that.
I just want to make it clear that the height regulations vary. They're not like static. They are lower closer to the airport unless you move away from the airport. The height requirements become higher than I don't like.
Also, in the packet here, we talked about it last time, the land use zones, again, that's an existing state law that's in effect today. What we're looking for is the ability to get variances to that existing state law. And again, any questions on that, Jen can answer those.
Commissioner Rixro.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners request the Michigan Aeronautics Commission to define and determine the airport hazard area for the Cherry Capital Airport and certify such determination to the county board of commissioners for the county... Oops, is this right? Is this the right one? Doesn't sound like it. And the Northwest Regional Airport Authority is authorized by Section 17 of the Michigan Airport Zoning Act, MCL 259.447.
Support.
I'll just speak to that for a minute. This is pretty straightforward to me. We're trading a little bit area from a 6.3 to a 10-mile radius for some local control in a more streamlined process, and so I support this.
Mr.?
I support it as well because it does increase local control. And it's been, what, 25 years? Or no, 75 years? A very long time that we have avoided doing this.
It's been a while.
Commissioner Lotner.
Yeah, so the zones right now, are you saying those are under federal control? Now, they set those limits up there, like say Zone 3?
The land use zones that you saw along through 5, those are state laws.
Those are state laws. So presently, like there's Zone 3, they allow only 25 people per acre.
Correct.
Okay. So, who's going out and counting people? State going out and counting people and making sure there's only 25?
It's actually supposed to be administered on a local level. So, that is something that the local level is supposed to be... It's further than that.
So, if we go more local control, are we going to be expected to be enforcing this?
You're supposed to be enforcing it.
Okay, you said... So, the guidelines were set up by the state, but it's supposed to be enforced locally?
Correct.
So, who's enforcing them locally? Is anybody enforcing them locally?
Zoning ordinance.
There should be.
It depends. I think it depends. Some zoning ordinances incorporate these land use guidelines, some zoning ordinances do not incorporate these land use guidelines. They are supposed to incorporate these land use guidelines, and then without this process, we wouldn't have a...
Okay. So, it's an assumption, I suppose, that if there's a house in there, you're assuming family of six, or you're assuming et cetera? Is that how that's done, basically?
Basically, how your land is... So, once... When the airport is... So, it zones up from an airport approach plan. That's what's in place now with a public use public land airport. So, that was established by the Michigan Aeronautics Commission back when the airport was new public use. So, at that point in time, in theory, it throws all the local land use zoning as it is, and per the zoning ordinance, could not be made more any incompatible to the uses around an airport than it already is. So, it did in here grandfathered local zoning as it is. Now, at that point in time, you can't rezone any of those areas around where there's a map in this...
Yep. We got that last week.
But you can't rezone those to make them any more incompatible. So, this would give you... If the ordinance is... Depending on how the ordinance is written, this would give you more flexibility with that.
Understood. But you mentioned it, because that's maybe the next question, whether those homes were grandfathered in. So, they're just... But probably... All right. Makes sense.
If I may... So, Commissioner Lotner, we have, I'll say, an instance of this going on right now where there is that debate between existing use and proposed use. As part of that application process, we ask them how many residential units, if it's going to a higher density, how many units? Is it 40, and it's only supposed to be 25? That sort of thing. So, it comes through the permit application process.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just... I mean, I still have the same concern as last week. I mean, have you guys had the conversation about sprawl and how this will affect that and like long-term plans for, you know, how to address that, really?
I guess the intent of this, again, is safety in direct proximity to the airport. It doesn't necessarily cover the whole greater zoning picture. That's... Again, that's determined more locally. This is just specifically for airport, aircraft, and people's safety with respect to the airport.
But it does affect that.
Well, the land use zones are tighter to the airport itself, and then runway ends. So, the runway ends is where it really extends out land use wise, and that's really just in theory as an aircraft comes back around inland safely. So, it doesn't interfere and/or cause any harm to public on the ground or in the air. The height use is the one that expands the 10-mile.
Okay.
The land use is not. The land use is tighter around the actual, like the runway. The runways themselves, there's a certain formula for that. And then also, too, there's a flare at the end of each runway. So, it doesn't like... It isn't like a 10-mile circle for the land use. The land use is much more concentrated than the height protection.
But the height protection is what I'm really talking about, because that is going to contribute to sprawl. If we can't go up, we go out, right? Like, that's generally a concern for people.
The height protections are in place now by the FAA. So, really, this is just giving you the availability to have a variance where right now you cannot. So, there's certain heights that one should reach that the state will intervene and disallow.
Okay. Either way, is what you're saying. So, right now, that...
Right now, we... Right now, we would stop.
Okay.
With the ordinance, it would allow you more control to offer a variance where the state... We're not here. We don't live in this community. We don't know what goes on, so we can just go by what FAA has or parts of these regulations. And that's... We just go get it, black and white, yes or no, does it mean? With the zoning ordinance, you could look and say, okay, we have other buildings in that vicinity where they're at somewhere height, so we don't see an issue where this would affect the land around it or the actual utility of the airport. So, you can allow a variance where right now you cannot. So, the state would make that determination for you as of right now.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
I do have one more question. If this goes through, what... I guess I'm asking about timelines, because the biggest way we will be involved is actually appointing people to be on this board from Leland County. So, is... Do you have a guesstimate on timeline?
So, the first... So, it depends on why... So, if you guys vote yes today, so you all agree that this is something we want, that greater control locally, then I would have to take this to our Michigan Aeronautics Commission, so to our Board of Commissioners, and I would present this so that they would approve your hazard areas, so they would approve that 10-mile circle. So, once they do that and it's approved, then we have... 90 days to do it.
Set a board.
90 days to do it, to do the zoning. Yep, and that's when you guys would actually... Before, you would actually point those three members, and you would actually have a pseudo board meeting to meet and create our Board of Commissioners that would actually create the ordinance itself. Once they create the ordinance, then they would present it back to the Board once it's accepted. Then, from that point on, we would have a hearing for people to come and pick color of the ordinance, which we can in any way that we need to. And then the zoning board will also meet again and then also appoint zoning board appeals, so that we have that second process.
Okay. So, we may be doing that this summer.
Any other questions or concerns? Frank Travis County, have they right gone through this? So, we have a motion. You have the motion, Jen? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Carrie and Bob, thank you for the agreement to the National Cherry Festival that we... You guys diligently worked on so hard, and it was fast, just thank you. I know it's a lot of work.
So, we're getting Blue Angels?
Yeah. Yes, they are.
Glad we had good weather for you.
Thank you.
Carrie's got a lot more work to make up the zoning.
And we will not be offended if you leave. Thank you.
I will be.
We now have Item 5A. Let's get a motion on the floor, and then if there's any discussion. Commissioner Russ.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners continue the stipend of 10 hours a week for the chief deputy clerk and 10 hours a week for the county clerk until an administrator/CFO is in place and the plan is implemented.
Support.
Any discussion?
I'd like to ask Mr. Lewis if there's a light in the tunnel or is there another train? There's always lights at the end of the tunnel. I haven't figured out if it's raining or just a nice light or sunshine. We'll figure it out. I've had a conversation with our finance director today. We'll get there, but it also depends on how fast that your next administrator is going to be on board. So, this is where this is at. Give you that magical date, July 31st. Thank you.
Commissioner Kramer.
I just think that I'm going to vote this through, and I think that, you know, it was our responsibility that all of this fell the way it did, and in order to take responsibility for it, we have to step up. And so, I think it's important that we do that.
I could just say, watching last week, the way we all got together and worked on some things, it was... It's a lot of fun, but we'll get it figured out, so. It's getting closer than further.
So, we have a motion on the table. All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Motion approved, six one. Thank you.
We now have Item 5B. Mr. O'Rourke.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners increase the salary of the Board of Commissioners to $8,000, and the chairman person increase to $10,000 to start in 2025. Per diem, for a half day, we'll go from $40 to $70. Per diem, for a full day, we'll go from $70 to $120.
Support.
Discussion.
I made the motion. I'm not running again. This does not affect me, but I think we've got some fine people that sit up here, and they do a lot of work, and I figured probably... I get 1,200 emails a year, plus the attachment, plus everything else. You know, and it's... You're not up here unless you love Leland County, and you're not doing it for the money, and even at this, you're not doing it for the money. But people need to be paid. Maybe get some more people up here that, you know, I can do that, you know? So, that's why I made the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Russ.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, too, that we just need to remove any barriers that we possibly can to increase the diversity of this board, and I really appreciate members of the public supporting the idea of having a more representative board in place. And this is just one tiny step, but a step that we definitely can do, so I'm going to support this.
Commissioner Oger.
I will relay again that my dentist suggested that... What do you do when you go to the dentist? You talk when you can.
We listen.
So, I came home and Googled it, and yes, it takes $9,500 to purchase what one could purchase with $5,000 in 1998. So, I don't think this is an irresponsible, huge move. We do need to make this position viable for younger people. That is a real huge concern for me. So, I will support this for our future, for the future of Leland County and this board.
Thank you. Commissioner Rixro.
I know the answer to the question. I can't recuse myself from this vote, can I? I have to vote one way or another. Yeah. That's, I guess, all I have.
I checked the same thing. It's in our board rules.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kramer.
I'm not running for reelection either, and I think this is an excellent idea. I really, 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 really want more people from my generation and the younger generations to start stepping up into these roles and positions. We need more young people, and just the factor of the matter is that our current pay will not cover daycare, like, for us. So, even to offset our costs, it's impossible. And yeah, I'm just really glad that all of you came and spoke up today. That meant a lot to me. Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Lotner.
I've got many. I hardly know where to start, but I just find it quite ironic in a lot of ways because we've had younger people on the board, and yet they've been challenged by older people who beat them out. And so, it's not up to us. It's up to the voters. And the voters will select whom they want. Now, you can try to get younger people to run for the board. As I said, when I ran, I didn't even know it paid. I just wanted to serve. So, anytime the issue of paying more came up, I shot it down because I wanted people up here to want to serve. We can't cover all our expenses. I understand child... Trust me, I had four. I had four. So, trust me, I understand losing money serving. I get it. But what's next? A business? So, I'm losing money for the business? So, should this pay enough to cover what you're losing because you're not at your job? Because a lot of younger people are employed, so we're asking them to leave their job and come serve for this amount. And I get the compensation. I, you know, as far as... We have one... We compared it to one county. That's disappointing. I don't know what Benzy pays. I don't know what Lake County pays. I don't know what Antrim pays, or Casco. We just looked at one county. I think this was... Should have been studied a lot more. And I believe that the fact that our healthcare is such a big package, if anybody chooses to take it, and I did not, have not, so that in itself should have been a big incentive for a young fam... For someone with a young family to run. And I know it was, because we did have some young families that actually had children while they, you know, were having children while they served, and that was a great thing. So, honestly, if you were to... I could force a motion if you were just to raise up the per diem. I think that that would benefit more people, because we have... How many people do we have? 40, 50, serve on our boards and commissions? That is going to benefit them. Most of them, I would say, are leaving work to come and serve on our boards and commissions. That makes sense to me. We raised that up once. I supported that. But as far as the salaries go, I just... I think... I want people to serve for the right reason, and, you know... Don't think we didn't do the math some years ago. I know Commissioner Watkowski and I sat down. We did the math, and this is probably 10 years ago. And it was like 50 cents an hour. Trust me, I get it. But you can have those who come up here and do a really poor job, and you can have somebody come up here and do a really good job, and they're, they're all paid the same. It's not, it's not a merit system. So that, and I heard that argument as well last week, and it doesn't make any sense to me.
Other discussion? We have a motion on the floor. All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, 6-1. Thank you.
I know.
Kind of late in coming that way. Was it, yeah, right?
Oh, yes.
I'd like to add that, hmm, I think in the future, we should just get the same increase as the employees, 3% or something, and then this never has to be discussed again.
I believe we can. I believe that we can only change at the end of the term. I think, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, that would be simple. We'd never have to talk about it again.
Well, the next raise would be 2049.
Four years.
Twenty-five years. Twenty-fourty-nine.
More than 25 years. We'll come back in 25 years, we'll talk about it again.
A lot of ways of wasting the county money, that's for sure.
Well, let's move on to our review of financials. Kathy, thanks for being here.
My, um, late late came to, pretty much it's the credit card charges, the timing of this meeting, getting the state funds, American, town, everything kind of pushed it close. So I appreciate your quick review of those. We did redeem some reward points when we have these cards. If they don't belong to the person's local card, it belongs to the county, so we redeemed and put that to revenue on the sheriff's card, the sheriff's card. And I terminated Ms. Allen's card, well, she did, it's her card, but the county business we took care of that, and that we didn't show it back in the account.
She says business card we see in those? Are they business?
Business card belongs to clerk.
Oh, business card is clerk? Okay.
Elan Financial is, was the board of commissioners.
Okay.
Administrator's card, and the undersheriff also uses Elan Financial.
Elan Financial.
Those are tied as a third party, tied to state savings bank, which is local. They go, they want to do it for local. Now, the clerk's card has been in existence for a long time.
Oh, that's a business card?
I've been here 20 years. Yeah.
And that's what we call the business card. Okay.
But the credit card policy is mine to enforce, and so I just want to assure you that we returned, we redeemed, and it benefits the county, not the person's local card.
Sure.
And we just touch base on rules of the credit card policy with our people once in a while, just to remind them how we use it, when that's appropriate. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
We don't want any more audit findings, like past.
We're good. We're just, every once in a while, we just have to have a little come to pieces.
Any questions for Kathy?
Kathy, on page six, late late, I think it was late late. Well, it's months in occupational therapy. We had an employee physical. Was that a new hire?
It could have been, um, I'm thinking we had a foreign deputy.
Okay.
Or it could be a gold.
So somebody not on our insurance yet then? Because wouldn't it be, that would have been covered just under our insurance?
Probably not.
Typically not, no.
Probably not.
These are done, these are done when employees are hired.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Just like you'll see the behavior in the management when they have a psych eval.
Psych eval, so those I knew. Right. Okay. And then what about Northern Building Supply? We have, it was Buildings and Grounds, I know, and it was 20 bags of Kwik-REIT.
Yes, and Elizabeth and I talked about that today because we felt that if it's in the building in Brown, you believe it's for the flagpole for the Veterans Memorial, the grant for the CBS, uh, for him. And so we're going to pull that invoice, and then we bill it, pass, uh,
Oh, through Veterans?
To the flagpole that's being put down there.
20 bags, Phil? Is it, maybe it's a big flagpole?
Flagpole was $3,000.
Still not a Kwik-REIT. All right, well, that makes sense if it's a flagpole. It just seems like a lot of Kwik-REIT for one flagpole.
We're going to verify with Jerry.
Okay.
But I think that if not all of it belongs to that project, but...
Yeah, might be another project around the grounds. Okay. All right, very well. And the other one, I think you, you answered before the meeting, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Any other thing for Kathy? Okay. We're now down to committee reports. Any committee reports or special reports?
Did you both do both of those right here? Is there a vote?
Those come down.
Committee reports.
Any reports? I don't think we have any reports.
I will say that I was in Brownfield and Land Bank this morning, and we are disposing of all properties in the Land Bank. So everything that's been foreclosed upon will have been sold.
Nice.
And we don't see any new foreclosures coming. So that's a good thing. And they're being sold to be built upon. There'll be homes built.
Housing North has asked that we remind everybody publicly about their housing survey that they are doing, and they have posted the Leland County dashboard on their site, and they'd like to update that with a survey. And all of us got a request to circulate that. Anything else? Yes, Commissioner.
Just the airport agreement, and they worked on it quite a bit. We had a meeting yesterday. It's pretty much in the record eagle and it's been on the ticker and everything. I have a copy with it, with me, if anybody wants to read it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. We're now down to our second public comment, and this is limited to five minutes, and you may speak to us about anything you think that we need to hear from you. Where's Bill? Miss Bailey? I've got my timer, I got my timer ready. Here you go. Where's Bill?
I think I buy airtime, and it's expensive, so. Oh, my gosh. So new topic, or old topic, subject inspections. We've been doing onsite transfer subject inspections over the years, so we have accumulated data, so now we can tell where we're seeing problems, and the health department has absorbed that part of the task in the staffing and programming. So it would be interesting to ask the health department if they have recommendations on how we should expand that program, if you're seeing most of the failures in old systems where you have no records, where you rest place, or next, just more interested in clean water. And I brought some cards with QR code on it, the Net Housing Survey. I'll leave them first here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Miss Bailey.
20 seconds for that.
Not enough. Any other public comments? Mr. Ashley?
Maybe the clerk some handouts, she'd pass them around. My comments are going to be a little bit different than what you handed out, but pretty close. I wanted to address the constant claims of election fraud. There's a group of eight distinguished Republicans, retired federal judges, former solicitor general, election lawyer, two former senators, congressmen, chief of staff, David Hopp. They investigated every claim and created this HOP report, and that's just a little summary of this handout here. These high-level Republicans are not easily dismissed as RINOs. These are the top Republicans in this country in terms of reputations. One of them served as a advisor to Vice President Mike Pence. So they're not, guys come in and out of the alley. The Cato Institute, which is an organization founded by Republican Charles Pope, who is not exactly a RINO, they support the conclusions of this report, as does the conservative leaning Stanford Law School, as well as a number of others. 64 cases were filed, and all but one were dismissed with no fines. One resulted in 270 votes being thrown out, that was the public. Some of these cases were heard by Republican judges appointed by Donald Trump. Several of Donald Trump's attorneys have faced censure, loss of license to practice, fines, possible jail time for pursuing these fraudulent cases. The claims of fraud and verbal attacks were made by Trump in six states, but no charges were ever filed. Republicans conducted audits in a number of states, including Michigan. The Michigan Republican held Senate, conducted two audits, and 250 other audits were held across the country involving 1,300 Republicans, Democrat and nonpartisan clerks. No fraud was found. Republicans in Antrim County, which we all know about with much fanfare, they held an audit. Again, no fraud. Numerous rebounds were made across the country, with 2020 becoming the most investigated election in our district. And I'd like to just quote from these eight Republicans, but they say, "But there is absolutely no evidence of fraud in the 2020 presidential election on the magnitude necessary to shift the results in any state, let alone the nation as a whole. In fact, there was no fraud that changed the outcome of even a single precinct." The report continued, "That is wrong and it's bad for our country for people to propagate baseless claims that President Biden's election was not legitimate." So we, as a nation, from the beginning progressed by witnessing events, reading, studying, and listening to knowledgeable people. We charted our future based on becoming educated, considering facts, and voting in our best interests. That we have not only survived 250 years, but we became the leading nations in setting an example for others to follow towards democracy. And we now find ourselves being directed in a different direction by a single voice of a reality TV star, known by his ego and his narcissistic manner. And to his credit, he's a master in marketing, and he's in love with the power of being the former president. He has single-handedly convinced millions that he won the 2020 election without any proof. And to get his whole job back, he maintains that self-certified lie. If the Pope report isn't proof enough for his event, for his believers, consider the simple matter that if President Biden was able to switch the votes in six states to himself, why didn't he switch the House votes in those states as well and become an imperial president? If the Democrats were able to hire experts in six states to alter the Dominion machines, is this indicative of their failure to outbid the Republicans to lose likewise in the states that the Republicans won?
Thank you. Thank you. Now I gotta get the stop. Thank you, Ms. Ashley. He's no better at it than I am. No, I'm worse. Any other public comment?
Bill, we almost sent out a search team for you.
Bill, you want to speak? You want to speak? Please come to the table.
Bill, we're here. I'm with township. And I hope everybody can see this one. That my people go, 2020 election, plus J6, votes related very closely. Watching our rumble for police votes has been given, one of the ones has to take it. I think the rest will be for the future. And the handout starts with this article that was mentioned by the gentleman that just spoke, which is hopeful, but I'm not sure what he said, but lost, not stolen. He says absolute proof of the election was not stolen, it was lost. So the handout, that's why I'm going to go first here. I listed, there are eight supposedly Republicans leaders that agreed with this handout, all the court cases in there. First one I'll mention, I mentioned three of them here. I could find information on them easily from a public broadcasting interview, which is a liberal outlet, and so is CNN for the other ones, and so their softball little reports here. But he says, this guy, what's his name? Ben Ginsburg, GOP election lawyer, says there's not evidence to support Trump's claims. These are just selections from it. There's no evidence so far, absolutely no proof, and trying to create a case for after the election is very difficult. There's lots of proof. Just what he said, though, after, trying to create a case after the election is very difficult. That's why we want the chain of command of control to be immediate, right here in our district, with our representatives here and the people on both sides of the aisle here. I'm not supposed to look back there, but we get two from each, and we look at every vote. Otherwise, there's no assurance of, and that's why 58% voted that Rasmussen poll in 2022, say they believe the election was determined by fraud. Okay, so do we just ignore them? How about the people on the TV? All the Democrats, on and on and on, 2016, 2018, this fraud just disappeared. Actually, I think the fraud in 2016 and 18, or before then, was for Hillary, but she didn't cheat enough. And they didn't count on the people being upset with what the government is doing. Is it too much to ask for local elections? You say you can't do it? How can we overlook this fraud? The Ginsburg, he makes, I have two votes from him, and then the next guy is some ex-lawyer, federal judge, Michael Moody. Supreme Court, federal judge, J. Michael Moody. He was very, he predicted that the Supreme Court would pass Colorado's move to try to get Trump off the ballot, which would have snowballed into other districts too. He was quite sure of that. But when he was, after, after the vote was nine to zero, he goes on and, I don't, this guy doesn't have a lot of credibility on something like that. And trying to keep the one that the candidates want off the ballot, anyway, I'm up to four minutes. The third one is John Danforth, same way. He thinks Trump should be put on trial for the J6 thing. The people were righteously angry from all the evidence of fraud. And that's what the end of this handout is, 17 facts that prove Biden stole the 2020 election. Look at just the highlighted points there. And I have very little time, so I'll look at the last one, number nine, they're in two groups, they add up to 27. Statistical anomalies in Georgia, oh, yeah, we're repeated, 50.05 to 49.95, 50 times in a row. That doesn't happen naturally. Please come and see Dr. Frank next month.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Makowski?
Good evening. Good to hear a healthy discussion about compensation in the quest for a viable position for younger people. It's true that it is up to the electorate most of the time. In the private sector, there is a continuous stress on simplification, improve the product, improve the service. There's no such thing in government. Government people aren't trained and choose not to do that. No one forces anyone to run for public office. No one forces anyone to run for public office. He's understanding. So no one has forced me to attend 4,000 county township meetings either. I attend. You may run for public office because, first of all, you want to serve. There's a principle, you know, been around for a few hundred years, the principle of subsidiarity. And it comes into play with the press, press obeys it here. We have a fallacy here in government that we assume government officials when elected are mission and omnipotent. And therefore, the principle of subsidiarity does not enter our minds or is kept from our minds. The principle of subsidiarity is such that in any activity which can be formed by a more decentralized entity, it should be done by a lowest level or can be done, should be done by a smaller and simpler organization. And I'll cite two of the things that are found, but there are many other ones. I've watched these meetings for 35 years. Government officials like to insert themselves into private people's lives. We're looking for decentralization. This principle is a bulwark of limited government. It's discussed a lot in Alexis de Tocquefort's, where America ended in the 1880s. He recognized it in personal theme. It conflicts with the passion for centralization and bureaucracy characteristics of the rough rich people. And we have it locally, right down to the township level. In my experiences, most politicians we elect are honest representatives. And they have a finite area in which they can do so. Unfortunately, many times want to take care of their own passions to achieve something, or what they say is for others. In reality, if they let us alone, we all be better off. Subsidiarity applies to all human institutions, including the state and every level of government, any level of government. That is, when government inserts rights and responsibilities in freighter violation, the principle of subsidiarity has occurred. If upper echelon bureaucrats in a cabinet department operate in the top-down manner, they always deny the flexibility of subordinates and all the way down to the level of the individual citizen. Any extended discussion of the principle of subsidiarity, which neglects to consider the respective roles of the state and all government and all governments, is radically flawed. Taft predicted that modern democratic government would degenerate Japan's into a huge totalitarianistic state, which would guide the individual in all his affairs and ensure that all of his needs were met. We're trying to do that here. For their happiness, they're such a government, in his quotations, willingly lazy, but it chooses to be the sole agent and the only arbitrator of the people's necessities. It facilitates their pleasures, manages their principal concerns, directs their industry, regulates the descent of property, and subsidizes their inheritance. What remains is to spare them all the care of thinking and all the trouble of living. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes? Ms. Kelchak.
Our government is a remarkable government.
Your name and.
Oh, my name is Sharon Celtic. I live in Leland Township, I live in Leland Township. But this is a wonderful government. I mean, just look at, we can all come up here, we can tell our grievances. We can, you can listen closely. You are here to give us a government that takes care of the people. And we are the people. And that's why we're here. We all stood up, we all said, "Pleasure, ladies." We all believe in it, everybody in this room. There's an alternative to our, to govern, our departments. The third thing is, we have this kind of government, it's our system of government. There's 83 counties in Michigan. There's probably five to seven commissioners in every county doing the same thing that we are doing. And we spend a lot of time, effort. And I just think it's wonderful that all over the country, every single state has commissioners or, and then below you, there's the governments for the townships. We have eleven townships. We still have people going there. We have the zoning commission. And you're not here to tax us to death or, no, they're not. They're here to see that we pay taxes so we can take care of everybody. That's the thing, that's how it works. And when I was in sixth grade, I'm going to say my teacher, Mrs. Edna Dean, people had her. She always started right out in sixth grade telling us what a wonderful country we had, that we were going to be able to vote when we were 18, and that it was important, and that we could select our own people in our own communities. And I don't know why there's such division when we all want the same things.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? I want to thank you for coming this evening. Any commissioner comment? Mr. Kramer?
I just want to thank, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Sharon, for your comment, is it perfect? Absolutely not. Do we have places to improve? Absolutely. But does it function well? Are we lucky? Yes, we are. And thank you so much for saying that, because I think we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Mr. Russ?
Yeah, I would just like to invite everyone, in keeping with the national theme of Earth Day 2024, Planets versus, Planet versus Plastics, the Leland County Energy Futures Task Force is hosting a panel discussion in observation of this day. And we've entitled it "Microplastics: They're in our air, our water, our land, and us." It's going to be Monday, which is Earth Day, at 3:00 to 5:00 in the Monarchy Room at the Leland Township Library. And we have an environmental engineer coming from Earth, zooming in from downstate, who is an expert in this concern issue. And we have the Grand Traverse Waterkeeper Heather Smith talking about the problem locally, right here in our waters. And then we have Sue Chapman, who is one of the members of Green Sutton's Bay, who is going to try to give us some really positive things that we can do to help improve this on a very special day. Since 1970, we've paused as a, as a community, as a world, to look at our earth and see what we can do better. And microplastics is the theme for this year. So I wholeheartedly invite everyone to join us.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Rugger?
I'd like to thank you for your comment as well. And I'm reminded that I believe this commission was formed in, I could be off by a year or two, about around 1864. But the very first act of the Leland County Board of Supervisors at that point was to give, allocate $5,000 for widows and families of Civil War soldiers. At the beginning of every meeting, they met every three months. They had supervisors of the poor. And the very first item on every meeting was a review from the supervisors of the poor. If a widow needed food, if a farmer's plow had broken, or his donkey had died, or whatever, Leland County reached out and helped. That was the first item on the agenda for the Leland County Board of Supervisors until 1920, when social programs started to fill some of the need. And you all know that we had a poor farm as well. So we have all proudly taken care of our own since our inception. And that is, we are stronger together. And since the beginning of time, people have gotten together because they can do more for themselves as a group than we can do alone. We can do things together we cannot do alone. And that is the strength of a county that works together. And I know everyone here is committed to working to improve the lives of everyone and to use your textile wisely to do so.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comment? I need to remind everybody to sign your closed session minutes and get them to the clerk. I'd like to thank Mr. Lewis for being here. And Jess, will you let your colleagues know that you were caught it tonight? Thank you. We now have approval of financials. Commissioner Lotner?
Do you want to go over the amendments or?
From the general fund. So just state the chairman amendment to it.
Okay, go ahead. On the fund transfer or on the amendment? Okay, so I move to approve fiscal year 2024 amendment number 2020, 24-004 and 24-005.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0.
I'll just amend the fund transfer number 24-002. That's incredibly what you put in the header, because you approved moving money from the general fund to the voter pool tonight.
Yep.
I will add that.
Okay. All right, so I've moved to approve fund transfer number 24-002 as amended.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0.
I would move to approve claims and accounts, $558,767.66.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0.
And move to approve post-audit, $3,611,422.17.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Thank you.